Good evening and welcome to the April 17, 2018 San Bruno Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call please.
Chair Chase. Vice Chair Biassoti.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lagace.
Here.
Commissioner Lethan.
Here.
Commissioner Mason. And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
With questions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No questions.
All right, item one, approval of the minutes for March 20, 2018.
Through the chair, I agree that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Of March 20.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Communications, item two.
There are no additional communications this evening.
Thank you. Item three, public comment. This is a time for folks in the audience, if you have something you'd like to address to the commission that's not on the agenda, please step to the podium and let us know what you're thinking. All right, and with that, public comment is closed. Conflicts of interest, item four. Any? Nope. Okay, we're not seeing any conflicts of interest. Item 5A, 1010 San Anselmo Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening. The applicant has applied for a use permit to legalize a bonus room and bathroom which result in a dwelling that exceeds 1,825 square feet of living area with a one-car garage. The site itself is located on the west side of San Anselmo Avenue in between Santa Maria and Santa Helena Avenue, and the lot measures approximately 44.5 feet wide by 90 feet deep and is currently developed with a two-story, split-level, single-family home. Single-family homes are located on either side of the subject property and multifamily dwellings are located to the rear and across the street. The proposal calls for the legalization of an unpermitted interior remodel located within the existing building envelope and contains a bonus room, full bathroom, which amount to 427 square feet in total area. The bonus room and full bathroom are located to the rear of the existing one-car garage which is found on the ground floor level. If approved, this would be a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home with 2,051 square feet of habitable area and a 354-square-foot one-car garage. As background, the applicant originally applied and submitted plans to the Building Division to legalize the unpermitted bonus room and bathroom in November of 2017. The Building Division ultimately reviewed those plans and they approved the associated building permit. However, the Planning Division indicated that a use permit would be required as the bonus room and bathroom, in conjunction with the existing living area, amounted to more than 1,825 square feet of living space with a one-car garage. Therefore, a use permit is required. The applicant subsequently submitted plans to the Planning Division for the associated use permit in February of 2018. Staff is supportive of the use permit request. I think it is important to note that there are no changes to the exterior of the building. The proposed legalization of the bonus room and bathroom fall within the existing building envelope. The site also contains a large one-car garage measuring 354 square feet in total area. I'd also like to point out that garage is set back from a portion of the single-family home, which creates approximately a 24-foot distance between the back edge of the sidewalk and the face of the garage, so a large vehicle could be parked within the driveway and would not encroach into the public right-of-way. Staff notified all property owners within 300 feet of the site, and we did not receive any comments. Overall, staff supports the use permit request, and we would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the use permit subject based on findings 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 22. This concludes my staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Please.
I had a couple of questions about the garage. I didn't see dimensions noted in the provided plans. Are you able to tell me what the finished dimensions of the garage are going to be, roughly, as they're proposed?
Yeah, the plans that were submitted to the Planning Division, I believe, scaled out to more than 12 feet in width from interior wall to interior wall, in excess of 20 feet. I think it was 24 feet deep.
Okay.
When you do the math, it amounts to 354 total square feet.
Okay.
For a one-car garage, the code would require a minimum of 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep.
Right. And then, just looking at the original footprint, did this used to be a tandem garage or originally was it just still a single car?
You know, that's a good question. The records are unclear when it comes to what that area used to be used as. In this particular case, the, I think it's important to note that the applicant submitted plans to the Building Division. This is not as a, this is not a result of code enforcement action. Rather, the applicant willingly submitted plans to the Building Division to legalize this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll open up public comment, and if the applicant would like to come to the podium and talk about your project.
I'm in the neighborhood.
You'll get a chance in just a minute. The applicant gets to go first. The applicant gets to go first. You'll have a chance in just a moment.
I should wait?
Yes, please.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Could I ask a question of staff?
Of course.
Just before the public hearing. These plans were a little difficult to read, and I noticed some features that were very unusual, not to mention that the text, some of the text read from, read as usual, but other text was upside down. Did you have any trouble understanding these plans? Do you feel you got a firm understanding of the project?
Staff does feel comfortable with the proposed plans as submitted. The plans were prepared by the homeowner, and we met with the homeowner originally to discuss the previous versions of the plans that were submitted to the Planning Division in February of 2018. We originally deemed the project incomplete and addressed a number of items for the applicant to address. Ultimately, the site plan and floor plans are drawn to scale and do meet our submitted requirements.
Great. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. The applicant, please. If you can give us your name and tell us about your project, please.
Hello, my name is Eva Sarmeno, and I am the homeowner and the applicant for 1010 South San Anselmo. And pretty much straightforward, as Matt explained, it was an existing, it is an existing room. Just want to legalize it. I have been doing other repairs to the home, the garden, front and backyard, and just want to make it all right and legalize that room that was existing and just updated it a little bit with flooring, and pretty much that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do. Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
How is the area of the home being used currently?
It's a family room. That fodder room?
Yes.
Yes. It's always been used as a family room, really.
And you continue to use it as such?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that covers all my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, if members of the public would like to speak, now's your chance.
Can I just try to visualize it quick? Is that online somewhere? I just wanted to know the way it impacted my property.
Would you step to the podium? Could you step to the podium?
Your question should be addressed to me. I should have, in advance, probably driven nearby to see exactly if I would be impacted. I'm on 219 Santa Helena, so I just wanted to know, is this property between Santa Helena and Santa Maria on San Anselmo?
Matt?
Yeah, through the chair. It is located on San Anselmo Avenue in between Santa Maria and Santa Helena Avenue.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Because my fence, I would probably border your yard, have a redwood tree there. I just, I do want to protect the redwood tree and the roots if there's going to be some underground work, something like that. And also had a question, there is a school across the street from me on Santa Helena. I would just wonder if there'd be any kind of traffic problems since there seems to be one now with a lot of people dropping off and picking up people always, and people always parking in my driveway because there's not very much parking around there, so that's just one concern I had. And then about how close it would be to my fence on 219 Santa Helena?
Okay. Well, I'll give you a quick answer to that. There's no construction going to be going on, so nothing physically is going to change on the site. We're just doing the legal paperwork in order to make a room that is exist, that is existing legal, so you won't see any changes on the site. David, you wanted to add something to that?
I think you said exactly what I was going to say. It's really internal to begin with, and it's coming in after the fact to make sure that a use permit is considered and approved to legitimize the project.
Perfect. Thank you, Matt. All right, David. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on this? Okay, we're going to close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the commission for comments, motions, votes.
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
I move that, I move that the planning commission approve. Use permit 18-005.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? Okay. The project is approved. All right, we move on to item six, presentations. We have a presentation this evening for Group 4 Architects on the proposed San Bruno Recreation Aquatic Project.
Vice Chair Biassoti and Planning Commissioners. I'm pleased this evening to introduce Dawn Merkis and Vance Stoner from Group 4 Architecture, Research and Planning. This firm has been hired by the City of San Bruno and the San Bruno Community Foundation to work with our community to come up with preliminary plans, develop preliminary plans for a new recreation center and aquatics facility at City Park. This group has been hired by the city and the foundation to work with the community. They're doing extensive outreach to get a sense of what the community is looking for in terms of actual programs and activities within this center. The funding for the new center, approximately $50 million, is coming from the restitution funds to the city that came from PG&E in the aftermath of the tragic 2010 Glenview PG&E gas line explosion and fire. After extensive research by both the San Bruno Community Foundation and the City of San Bruno, the community came together and decided in terms of what it would prefer to see in terms of a capital project with these funds from PG&E, it would be a new recreation and aquatic center at City Park. Tonight, the representatives from Group 4 will present the work they've done to date and give us a sense of where we're going in terms of next steps, and look for your comments. So with that, I'd like to invite both Dawn and Vance to come forward and make their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Commissioners. Dawn Merkis with Group 4 Architecture, principal, working on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. And with me here tonight is Vance Stoner, our project manager and also an associate with our firm. So we are really happy to be here tonight and thrilled with the engagement and the participation from your community so far. Just going to give you a quick overview of our work plan, our schedule, going to talk about the program options that have been considered and being weighed in by the community as well as our advisory committee, and going to be presented at a study session to City Council next week, and then get your feedback also on site options as we've started looking at site strategies where the new facility should be located in the park. So with that, we just wanted to summarize that the work that was done in 2016 and 2017 is not, a lot of good thought, a lot of good effort went into the community and the work that was done for the visioning for this new center, and that really was our launching pad as we started our project. We began our work in January of this year, and there's really two major tasks, the conceptual design phase that we're working on. The task that we are just about to summarize next week and looking to get your input on before we go to City Council at that study session is what we call the alternatives. And the alternatives include building program alternatives, what the different spaces should be in the new Recreation and Aquatic Center, and then what the site strategies are. And once we get direction on the building program and the site alternatives, we'll develop the conceptual design that will be completed by the end of June. And so that's generally what our work plan is, and included in that work plan is a lot of engagement and a lot of participation. I mentioned we're working with our advisory committee. We just had our third meeting last week. We've been doing stakeholder and technical meetings with neighbors, program users, renters of the facilities, as well as Park and Recreation staff, planning staff, building, fire, really trying to lay the groundwork for everyone's approval as the project moves forward. And then the public meetings, I kicked this off in February with the council presentation, went to the Park and Rec Commission meeting, February 21, and also Park and Recreation Committee, March 21. Open house, the 22nd was when we had our open house at the Recreation Center, followed by a community meeting. Then the intercept kiosk. Did any of you go to the pancake breakfast, the egg hunt? No. So our kiosks were there, and we had a great turnout that day, even though it was raining. Over 180 people participated and gave us their inputs. And then additionally, we went to the high school and got the leadership classes, about 60 students, to give us input. And then supplementing all of this is the online survey, which has been incredibly successful. And as of, was this this morning, Vance, that we got the 6:50, or is this yesterday?
It was then from last Friday.
So last Friday, and we heard that there was a new email blast going out to Cappuccino parents and families, so this is probably would increase more since then. So probably pretty safe to say right now, over 1,000 participants have given us input into the program options and the site alternatives. Having said that, we're not done. More yet to come. Additional technical meetings, these will be ongoing throughout the project. So the technical meetings with city staff, with Recreation Department, really vetting all the details of the project is really, really critical from planning, building, fire, police and recreation. And then in May and June, starting to kind of develop that conceptual design as we're coming to the recommendation. Our advisory committee is a really nice cross-section of community leaders. And then the round two outreach will begin on June 3. And that will be more community intercept kiosks, community meetings, the online survey, the advisory committee, all coming back together with the recommendation, the conceptual design on June 26. So with that, we're going to dive into the program options. How we laid out the program options for the community to give us input is the consultant team that we have has a really large depth and breadth of experience in aquatics facilities and operational and recreational facilities. And so really going through all of the information that was collected in 2016 and 2017 and looking at your current operations, looking at how people are using your current aquatics, recreation facility, and came up with a recommendation for what we call the base program. And just flipping through what's included in the base program is, of course, a lobby lounge, gymnasium, about the exact same size of the gymnasium that you have now, full high school court, divisible into two smaller cross courts with bleachers on one side, kind of a lot more functional than what you have now because you don't have that divider in there to do the two cross courts, but about the same size as your current gym. Fitness and wellness, so this includes both the cardio and the weight components, but most important and appropriate, what we call is group X room, and it used to be called the aerobics room or the dance room, but it's used for so much more than that right now, we're calling it the group exercise room. And that's a nice 2,200-square-foot room that can accommodate all those high-impact activities that you want to do on a sprung wood floor, as well as the dance classes or even yoga or stretch classes. For the aquatics, in the base program, it's probably pretty important to note that we do have, again, it's called the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center, and so looking at really making a drastic improvement to the aquatics. And that we understand from both the feedback online and the previous work that was done with the community, this would be a focal point of the new center. And so we're looking in the base program to have both an indoor pool as well as an outdoor pool. And both of these would be year-round. And I keep trying to do the math to see how much of an increase in water usage you would have. So you currently have a small outdoor pool that use three months out of the year, so I think you're actually getting like 11 times more usage in water with the two pools that we're proposing that are year-round. So pretty excited about that. The indoor pool is the warm water pool, and that's for the seniors, the families, recreational swim. There will be some lap swim in there as well as kind of the open swim. The outdoor pool is a 25-yard pool, very similar to what you have now. It's the cool water, it's for the lap swimmers, it's for the water aerobics, and people who are a little bit more serious, the water is still heated, will be year-round, but the outdoor temperature is not so important to them. And so that really gives you that complement of both leisure and recreational water. We'll have conference rooms, classrooms. We're looking at a minimum of two standard classrooms that are divisible with the partition so they can open up to be 1,800 square feet, or divided into two 900-square-foot rooms. An art classroom, which is a little bit larger, more storage, resilient finishes, and multiple sinks and storage space for the art projects, as well as early childhood education space, which has an attached restroom for security for the classes that might happen here, as well as the smaller furniture and sinks and resilient finishes. And so then, that's kind of the summary of the base program. Have any of you done the online survey yet? Have you gotten the emails? Good. All right, well, if you haven't done it, it's going to be open until next week, so we encourage you to do it. And so that was the base program. And so what we're asking for people to weigh in on here is shown in this chart right here on the right. And so we have a recreation component, we have a community component, we have an aquatics component. And within each of those, we have one large space, one medium space, and one small space. So as we look at the options with the recreation supplemental component for the program, we have another small gym, we have a game room, and we have a consultation room. And so the idea is, on the survey or the interactive kiosk, you're able to pick one large space, one medium space, and one small space. They don't have to be in the same row, but they have to be, they don't have to be in the same column, but they have to be in the same row. And so you can choose the large community hall, you can pick the teen classroom from the recreational space, and you can pick the smaller space from the aquatics. For the community add-on, we have a community hall, an additional classroom because classrooms are always high in demand, and they're all flexible and multi-use. There's no, lots of storage, lots of idea that this is going to change, you know, hourly on how it's going to be used. And then the third space is a music room, which is a small space. It's really a studio space. It could be a music rehearsal, it could be used for a digital lab, just basically a smaller room that can be used in many different ways. For the music room, though, it would need to be acoustically insulated so that it's not disrupting neighboring spaces. The aquatics add-on is more indoor water, kind of increasing that leisure pool and its capacity. And the medium space is outdoor water play. This would be a seasonal element. It would not need to be inside the secure line, and I think if you've been in the urban plazas and things, you've seen them where they can be turned on in the nice weather and just public plaza in the nice, not so nice weather. Or an additional spectator party room adjacent to the pool. One of the things that's really nice for the leisure pool, the indoor pool, for those early childhood swim classes and stuff, is that there's a space for parents to watch. People like to watch their kids get their classes, and it's just a nice element that it could also be used as additional party room, which is also really important as we develop the program recommendation, is because that is a revenue opportunity for the center. So really looking at sustainable operations has been one of the key factors for us as we're looking at developing the program for the site. And so just to share a little bit of what the current thinking is, the recommendation from the consultant team, as we look at these program elements that we get to look at for the enhancements, the consultant team is suggesting that the community room, the community hall, be the element that be included, the large element. That's because, as I mentioned, the aquatics program is pretty well taken care of in the base program with the two pools. There is a big need for additional community hall, and it is the one element in this large element row that is not in the base program. There is not a large community hall, and that does include the kitchen and the support spaces for that. It seats about 250 dining in its current kind of program space that we're looking at. For the medium space, looking at recommending the teen space. We have a lot of adult spaces, we have the early childhood recreation space, but looking at really creating a classroom that might support more teen programming, a game room. That doesn't mean to say that the seniors can't use it before school's out, or the young professionals can't use it in the evening, but just looking at a place that provides an amenity that would support our younger generation, kind of the tweens, if you will, and their use. And then the smaller space that is being recommended by the consultant team is the additional pool, party room, spectator space adjacent to the pool. But still, having said that this is kind of the merging recommendation, we really value your input, and it is all being taken into consideration as it's going forward to council next week. Just wanted to give you some of the insights as to the project team and what we're thinking. So with that, before my voice goes out, I'm going to let Vance take us through the site
Good evening. Before we kind of start talking about the proposed site options, we wanted to spend a little bit of time talking with you and reviewing kind of the existing conditions of the project site as it pertains to site conditions and parking. So you're all probably very familiar with City Park and kind of the extents of our boundary for the built building, proposed building is within this white dashed area, and again, currently getting main access into the park from Crystal Springs as well as to the southeast from De Soto Way. And again, your existing recreation center here to the north end and the aquatic center kind of to the south. That being said, kind of the main site conditions within our project boundary that are currently, could be improved upon and potentially our project will help do so, is kind of the layout of City Parkway currently, and as mentioned in the northern end of the site here, kind of with the existing parking that's immediately adjacent to the recreation center, currently City Parkway is bisecting that. And in terms of people trying to park and access the recreation center and people passing through the thoroughfare of City Parkway, there's potential problems and kind of a dangerous condition. So one of the, what we'll be looking at potentially is separating a portion of City Parkway from this existing parking area to kind of create two designated zones, one for parking and one for automobiles passing through. And we have a slide upcoming that kind of describes that potential reorientation.
Excuse me. So does that mean you'll move City Parkway over to one side and all the parking will be on the other?
Correct. That's, we have a, we'll show you that in a few slides. That is one of the proposals. And again, as we look at the project as well, potentially kind of traffic calming measures to slow down City Parkway, whether that be raised crossing guards between the recreation center and the other side of the park as potential measures to help kind of slow down traffic between both sides of the park. As well in this condition is the creek that is currently running through the park, and again, at this kind of, the existing parking that's next to the recreation center and City Parkway, and it actually becomes a channel running through City Parkway with people having to cross that to park and then cross back over to access the recreation center or other parts of the park. And so there's potential as well in the same location- And so there's the potential as well in the same location to potentially reroute the channelized system here and separate that from City Parkway and the parking. And again, looking for this project to also potentially improve that condition. In terms of parking, we want to begin understanding what the existing condition is today. So we've kind of created these three different levels of existing parking, which the uppermost being the existing, what is immediately adjacent to the facilities today, so the recreation center. Again, the triangle lot and the parking along City Parkway is about 73 spaces. The pool parking lot, which is, again, the lot that is serving the southeastern portion of the site and the present aquatics center, is about 70 spaces. Then the next level includes the parking that's up near the picnic shelter, as well as termed here the playground parking lot, which is the parking that's closest to the edge of the site near the playground, as well as in the back kind of maintenance area near the softball field. Today, we were, had a meeting with city manager Connie, and she questioned the number of 45 spaces there. And I did go back and count via Google Earth, and I believe that this number was provided by the city originally. And I, including in that is parking nearest to softball field. Whether community members know or whether that's actually allowed to park back there is unknown, but the 45 spaces does seem to be including that section there. That's what the higher number, she was surprised that there was that many spaces in that location. Just a note on that. And then finally, within the vicinity, so directly along Crystal Springs Road, above the recreation center is about 35 parallel spaces. And again, the senior center includes here 139 spaces between this lot, as well as the lot across the street from us. That being said, while if you add all of this up, that does seem like there's quite a few spaces, but as we've been hearing a lot from all of city staff and the community members throughout this process, that when it's a Saturday in the park, when the aquatics is open in the summer, when there's a baseball game, and people using the community center, there is a demand for parking. And that tends to spill into the neighborhoods and kind of take over other neighborhood uses for, from street parking, as well as your, you know, your large event parking. So this project looking at how we can best serve not only the recreation uses, but also improve the park conditions in the park for the community. In terms of generating our initial kind of demand specifically for the building, we've started using two different metrics. One is tying the building uses into the facility parking requirements by the, from the city, which gives us about 179 spaces, as well as looking at an alternative metric from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for their standard recommendation for recreation centers, which actually gives us a higher number of 186. You'll see here that, again, the park parking requirements, the city of San Bruno doesn't have any specific requirements for park parking. And so that currently, right now, is to be determined for how the park demand might affect any of the required parking for the building. But that being said, as we, the project progresses and we move on to getting the CCO entitlements, a traffic engineer will be brought onboard to also not only look at the traffic conditions for the project, but also potentially for start studying a parking demand study that will help us influence what the right mix is for the park, as well as for our building requirements. And looking at some of the immediate emerging parking strategies, again, for the facility use, looking at the lot here adjacent to the existing recreation center, as well as then the pool parking lot to the south and some of the other accessory lots. And this is a very preliminary graphic, again, showing potentially the concept for how we could rearrange City Parkway to create a designated kind of vehicular path, and then separate expanded lot here with 90-degree parking. And as this is showing, this is getting actually a gain of about 20 spaces. And again, with how the exact location of the building still be to determine, but this is the concept, at least initially, for how we could improve that condition for, from the vehicular traffic and parking in that area and get a few increased spaces next to the existing facility. And again, we'll be also looking at utilizing the parking lot to the south of the pool currently. In terms of the site alternatives that we're working with, we are focusing the built improvements in two locations within the park. One, which you'll see is called the hill scheme, roughly in the same area of where your existing recreation center is today, and an alternative scheme called the valley scheme in the area where the existing aquatics center is. One thing that are kind of on first instinct of visiting the site, for both of these different alternatives, what we really wanted to try to achieve is not creating any type of built mass that begins to extend across the park to block kind of visual views and the feeling, the sense of feeling of the park continuing. Currently, right now, with the kind of the open space that's flowing through here, you have a really great sense of the hills beyond and be able to connect not only to the upper portions of the park, but also the county park beyond, back down to where the playground is. So both of these options, trying to restrict our built mass as much as possible, really allow the park to kind of flow through. So the first alternative, the valley alternative, is focusing the new built structure kind of towards that southeastern edge of the site. And really, this option, as you enter from Crystal Springs Road into the park, in this, in this scheme, you have the park really kind of as your gateway with the building beyond, with the building kind of serving as really a, kind of a focal point within the park. The existing recreation center in this option would be demolished and could be returned to parkland. And really, the strength of this option is really having kind of these three different faces that interface with the park. So from this northern edge with the program space, if that was the gym there, maybe the community hall here, you could imagine that this whole northern edge could be able to access this open space to the north, as well as having two different kind of distinct conditions, one with the front edge here along City Parkway, as well as on this edge here, potentially being able to have outdoor space that overlooks kind of the improved creek condition here. The building placement of this as well, if the entry was focused on the corner here, could potentially also tie in directly to the parking located in that area. And then outdoor pool located kind of on the south, the southwest corner. These are just some inspirational landscape images that we've been collecting with our landscape architect, showing kind of the potential conditions for the valley scheme, for example, and a kind of improved riparian creek zone along that edge, the potential to have some terracing off the buildings. The next alternative, the hill alternative, so focusing, really focusing the built form against the existing hillside, and we're roughly in the same location of where the recreation center is today. And we have two different schemes for this, both a new and a reuse. But in any, the hill scheme really then is focusing kind of the built mass towards your entry with the building really serving as the gateway to the park. As well as having the opportunity to back the building into the hillside allows for, allows not only for kind of a visual block to Crystal Springs Road, it also kind of could serve as a noise block to the traffic that's heading along Crystal Springs Road. With this option, pulling the building kind of still roughly where the existing is today, the outdoor aquatics would be returned to parkland. And really, in this sense, then, you're getting the full flow of the park towards the south. And this option, outdoor pool, could either be raised up a level or so, kind of overlooking the park, or potentially could also be sunken in. But again, you're getting really great southern exposure to the pool here as well. For the second option of this, we are looking at potentially a reuse of the existing gym and then building new construction around that, essentially to wrap the old with the new construction. That being said, obviously, the existing would be brought up to current seismic code, as well as upgrades made to the spaces within. And some thoughts that we had on that was potentially maintaining, obviously, the grand second level gym spaces above for this type of construction. We couldn't afford such a grand scale with the glue lamp structure that we, with the budget that we have today. So then, in terms of the architectural value, there is some importance to that. But understanding that the current situation with having the classrooms on the first level is currently problematic in terms of acoustic zoning with the basketball people playing up above. And so one thought for that is if we were wrapping the reuse and all of new construction, all of your new classroom spaces would essentially be on the outside edge, and the first level of the gym could be turned into staff parking, as well as placing all of the back-of-house spaces on, under the gym here to allow for acoustic separation. And again, some inspirational images for both of the hill schemes. With the hill scheme, an opportunity to really tie into the landscape, we've been thinking about, again, whether the pool's up a level or terrace down, there's the opportunity to potentially create some unique landscape conditions within the park around the building. That being said, working, again, for the consultant recommendation, as well as working with the advisory committee, meeting the merging site recommendation, is the hill scheme all-new option. And briefly, some of the kind of main points that led us to this decision, as well as the initial endorsement by the advisory committee, again, is kind of with the hill and this, with the hill scheme in this placement, it really is kind of leaving the rest of the park kind of as the current layout that it is today, with most of the built impacts occurring where the existing recreation center is. As well as the potential impact of moving a new facility, a new larger facility, while it is on, the valley scheme was on the same location as where the outdoor aquatics was, the larger facility and the potential impact on the neighbors on to the southeast, not only in terms of noise and vehicular traffic, but just kind of that built impact on that southern edge of the park, seem to potentially be more problematic and concentrating, again, the built mass to kind of where the existing recreation center is today, seem to make, to make more sense. In terms of being able to terrace into the hillside, there's a lot of great opportunity to play up, you know, sinking the building into the height, kind of into the hill to get some of the scale and massing down within that park, which is a potential opportunity as we begin developing how tall and what this building would look like, being able to kind of sink into the hillside will help with that. In terms of the decision-making for the all-new option, again, in reviewing with advisory committee, a general preference in not taking the risk on a reuse opportunity, there was thought of reusing the existing gym in recreation center, recreation center, that there could be cost savings in, cost savings for the project with the reuse potential. But I think a general preference for not going down that path once we get into construction and any unforeseen costs that may arise, may actually, in the end, make the project budget quite larger. So with that being said, I think now, want to turn it over to, back to the commissioners for any comment on what we've presented so far.
Thank you.
Well, a lot of hard work went into that. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Anyone?
Through the chair.
Perry.
I've lived in, immediately adjacent to the park for quite a few years, and even when I live, where I live now is only two blocks away. And one of the things I was concerned about was the effect on the adjacent park spaces by whatever new facilities are placed there. I think your preference for the hill plan is certainly good for that achieved. It puts this intense use somewhat far away from the neighbors in the entire area. That makes a lot of sense. The things I am a little concerned about are, right now, people park on the other side of the street, come over to the ball fields. You know where those other parking spaces are? They're off to the right of that diagram?
Currently down, down here.
No, I mean the ones that are to the right of that ball diamond there. They're adjacent, they're adjacent to the city maintenance yard?
Over here, yes.
You're aware of those parking spaces?
Yes.
Well, I don't, I don't know how much time you spent there when they're having soccer and baseball and tennis, but it would seem that there may be an opportunity to increase the parking on that side of the street, near that diamond and the tennis courts. Because right now, the neighborhood to the, on the De Soto, zip, 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 it's going back and forth.
Sorry, I'm going. It's not, sorry, it's not on this diagram either.
Okay. Right now, that neighborhood that's immediately down on the screen from the tennis courts is essentially saturated by visitors. So if you put some, if somehow you were able to improve the parking to the right of that diamond on the right side, yeah, right where your red dot was moving, I think it would benefit both the people who would attend the park and the neighbors. Right now, your, your scheme shows improved parking adjacent to Crystal Springs. But the parking on, on the other side of Crystal Springs, or City Parkway totally disappears. And that, that parking is always heavily occupied. So it seems a little quirky there. I'm thinking maybe, you can't do much with that creek through much of the park unless you kill all the trees, which is a popular sport these days. But right about where it gets to the new parking you have there, if you moved the creek south a bit, you might be able to get even more parking next to the rec facility. Because the rec's facility is going to need parking like crazy, and they're still gonna, people love that area of the park with those two, well, there's actually two ball diamonds there, you're probably aware of that.
Yes.
Two ball diamonds and tennis courts. Those things get such heavy use. I thought it was a lot before, but it's even more now than ever. But, good presentation and looks like a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, thank you. Those are great suggestions so far. And I think, one, the option of having the hill scheme here, definitely, the park, this parking lot here, again, is kind of in the current existing condition today, has to do double duty with not only serving the recreation facility, but also the park.
And it's not, it's not that good a parking lot in the first place. I mean, if you really, if you really revved up your thinking a little, you'd put a two-deck parking structure there. Because you're going to be way short on parking.
Yes, we're, we're aware of that, and we're trying, we're racking our brains as well to get the best.
Try living there and figure it out.
But, um.
Everybody who lives in that area knows that.
And you are an expert on that then, so appreciate it. But I think definitely the, the comments on more efficient layouts of that corner lot is, is good.
I, I know the city's allergic to parking structures, but if there was ever a place for it with a new facility there, that would be it. Even if you sunk it below grade, which is a horrible idea because you potentially have water control problems, but anything you could do to improve that parking picture would be great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, it concerns the creek. Is there any, at this stage of planning, is there any interest or possibility of some stream restoration around that area to provide more habitat, but also possibly trail?
Yes. So currently, the idea that working, our landscape architect is SWA out of Sausalito, and they're a great partner for this project as well. Potentially, as we're separating the creek from City Parkway and that existing parking structure, the thought is to potentially return that to more of a natural riparian habitat instead of a channelized approach. Obviously, both options could be looked at, but we're actually very excited about the idea. idea of the more riparian habitat, not only for the added benefit of just the more natural and tied into the natural systems, but for our own building and how we deal with rainwater runoff, potentially using the creek, that's already a resource there to help us and aid us in that, in how we're dealing with our rainwater.
Sweet words to my ears.
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
So I attended the public meeting and I just wanted to compliment you. There were a lot of people there and I think the meeting was really well facilitated and there was really an opportunity for meaningful engagement between the community, staff was there, Mr. Altering was there, we had the city manager there, we had the city council there, and I really felt like people were being listened to. So thank you for doing that. I have a couple of questions. If you preserve the current space, the gym and the parking, the gym and the parking structure was the idea that you mentioned, how would the facade, the outside integrate with such a, with such a new look?
So that is, it's a challenge in itself, but I think the, as you know, the, while the interior of the gym and the, kind of the volume and the feeling of that on the inside is iconic, and it is also quite iconic from the outside with the kind of the groin vault dome, but everything else kind of on the existing exterior facade is not necessarily that architecturally attractive. So kind of two things. One, with the opportunity for the new construction to wrap the existing, you would imagine that as all-new exterior walls really, so what, the existing exterior of the gym today really would be wrapped in new construction. So you wouldn't really have a sense of what the existing exterior of the gym would be since you're wrapping that. That being said, it's a little premature to, for us right now in our planning work to understand how that would exactly look yet, but having an idea that it would still want to bring a new identity to the facility. There is opportunity potential with the way those grown vaults are working to kind of have the new volume. For example, the, the larger volume aquatics portion here potentially could play off of the dome in some form and have maybe a concave shape or some other kind of bold roof type of structure or form to kind of complement the groin vault shape, so.
And are there cost-saving measures to preserving that space?
We have performed a tier-one structural assessment that listed all of the deficiencies that are currently at the gym today in terms of potential seismic deficiencies. And further analysis would be needed to really understand what the specific costs would be to improve that. If you want to add anything to that.
So yes and no is the right answer. There potentially could be some cost-saving because the vertical structure is probably very close to meeting current code. The seismic structure is not. So if we can build off the vertical structure and reuse that, there potentially is some new cost savings. But all of the systems from mechanical, electrical, lighting, architectural finishes, windows, the envelope, all of that would have to be replaced. And so, the cost savings that you have then really is maybe in the ten, 10% at the most, maybe five to 10% of the cost, you know, the cost of the project. But when you're looking at reuse, we all know, because we've done our little home remodels, that that budget just keeps getting pushed and pushed when you do reuse. And so, the risk then is that we would increase our construction contingency by probably 10 to 15%. And the reality that you will need that is pretty probable unless you pay a lot more money to do more investigations upfront, which take more time. And so that, you know, the higher risk kind of outweighs the potential cost savings. One of the things I think the recreation staff feels very strongly about is the sustainable operations that I mentioned in the building program. They really want to be able to market this facility and get people excited to come. And in order to do that, I think they're more comfortable having a new facility in order to, you know, have the attendance that they want for the sustainable operations and the revenue generation. So those are kind of the things weighing heavily against the reuse option right now.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
I have a couple more, but you can go. You can go first.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. And the next question I have, because there, there are a couple, so Perry might want to cut me off. The BASE Foundation, I just wanted to be clear, since this is a public meeting, that my understanding of the BASE from the public meeting was that everything in the BASE is definitely being included, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, can you talk a little bit about the revenue? I know at the public meeting, there were options and within each of the pictures, there was a dollar sign, a negative sign, two-dollar signs, or three-dollar signs.
Yes. So we're working with one of our consultants right now. He's done kind of the high-level overview of the operational cost for both the recreation option, the aquatics option, and the community hall option, the community add-on option. And based on anticipated cost recovery, the highest cost recovery would be with the community hall. Basically, by adding more leisure water, you're not going to be able to increase your capacity to bring in that many more dollars for aquatics. So our BASE program is kind of the sweet spot for aquatics. And then we kind of went into that BASE programming knowing that was very important to the community of San Bruno. When you look at the gym add-on for the recreation add-on, your rental fees for gym space are just not comparative to that community hall revenue. And so, right now, just kind of comparing the three program options, there's about a 10% discrepancy with the community hall being the highest cost recovery, then recreation, and then aquatics. And so, that again is kind of feeding into the recommendation from the consultant team about the operational cost and the cost recovery potential of the entire building program.
Okay, thank you. Going along this, those same lines, the, I mentioned a minute ago that there was a lot of what felt like meaningful engagement at the open meeting. Tonight's presentation, the words I kept hearing were the consultant's recommendation. So I just wanted to hear about, for those, for those commissioners who weren't present, it was really a nice activity. Everybody had stickers and we were encouraged to place stickers on the, on the, I guess, the add-ons that we liked best as part of like this overall survey. And so, I wanted to know when that was going to fold into this process.
So that will be unveiled. We thought we should save something for the city council next week. And so, really, where the feedback is weighing in on all of the options will be unveiled next week. But they all are very close, I will share. There's not, there is a lot of consistency with the recommendations from the consultants and what the feedback we're receiving from the community. It's not exact as of yet, but it's still underway. And I think the intent for the community input was for it to inform the process and because that online survey is not facilitated, when we look at the results from the facilitated feedback, I would say that it's very consistent with the consultant's recommendation. There is a little bit of variation, but smaller percentages as we look at the overall from the online survey.
Thank you. That was really nicely done. I'll hold my, the rest of my questions to allow the commissioners, opportunity.
Through the chair. I haven't had, I haven't been able to attend any of the meetings, but I, I appreciate the feedback very much from Commissioner Mason. But I have been able to participate in the surveys you've sent out and I think you've done an excellent job reaching out to the community in that sense. And you had a great survey and I love surveys. It was fun to take, so good job. And I love options, options. So thank you for that. And I think that having taken the survey and thought through it myself and then hearing your feedback and the preferred options that the planners have kind of leaned towards, I really see a lot of value in each of those. And I, I see a lot of value, just as you were saying, in selecting, ideally selecting add-ons that could help to bring in revenue. And, and I really do like the idea of trying to include teens because I think that we need to have a destination where we can keep them doing good, healthy learning activities in a public space. So thank you very much for that. And then, having had, we use the recreation center and the park area a lot. I have two little kids and we do camps and we do swimming and we use the park and we do baseball. We've kind of used, I feel, almost every area of this, this entire center. And I see a lot of value in the spectator area of the pool. It hadn't occurred to me that that could be used also as a party space. But also, having sat through a lot of swim lessons, freezing or, you know, burning, that sounds super, super fabulous, having.
Well, the, the party rooms are one of the big revenue generators. And you think about, you know, locations for your kids' party, which would be better? There is two party rooms in the BASE program, so this would be the third one, which would be a little bit more interior and support the spectator space. The other two are being located closer to the outdoor deck and that outdoor pool so that it can be both summer use as well as the winter use. But this third one is really supporting party potential as well as the spectator space.
Yeah. Thank you. And also, as my children are starting to get older, every day they get older, I imagine that they're going, going to be a little bit more independent. And as they have been, I, we, we live within biking distance, walking, kid walk, from our home. And I would love to see this space be more walkable. Because right now, I know that if I tried to send my children on foot independently or by bike independently, they'd get, they'd get run over, for sure. And, and I, I'm really glad that you're looking not only at parking, but also at the pathways and the crossings. I think that would be great. Adding bicycle parking would be wonderful. And especially for camps, I, I, I don't know, I have a different experience with parking, I think, than Commissioner Peterson. You live in the neighborhood and I don't live in the immediate neighborhood. The only place that I have difficulty parking when I use the rec center is for drop-off and pickup times at camp where everybody's flooding in and then everybody leaves. But for the most part, I've had success parking in designated areas, not in the, in the neighborhoods, though it sounds as though that may fluctuate depending on the season and, and the use. So I would love to see an area where there was a lot more, where parents could zoom in, drop off, and zoom away and not have to find parking, walk your kids in, walk back, leave your parking space and go.
Yes. Thanks for that feedback. I think definitely we're, as we're looking at City Parkway, and I don't think I mentioned this, but again, there is wanting to potentially provide continuous sidewalks for the, for the, for the project, as well as, I don't know if it's visible here, but working with Marco with SWA, definitely, we've heard not only from Parks and Recreation staff, but also from a lot from members of the community about the issue with drop-up and pickup during the summer camp program. So that's definitely is on our radar. It's great that you're reinforcing that tonight. But that is determining where in the best location for that is under, we are looking at that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, that's all I have.
Perry, did you have something you wanted to add?
I don't know, I don't want to step on anything.
No, you, we're good. You want to?
Oh. Professionally, I do construction management, general contracting. And while as a resident, I've grown to like the facilities that are there. A lot of that's because I'm used to seeing them. And if you do, I don't know if you're doing it, but I suspect you are, you look like a pretty sharp group to me, life cycle costing, maintenance, life of structure, life of facilities, ability to incorporate new developments in the future. All of these factors suggest, I believe, and I've seen this on other projects, similar projects I've worked on, everybody loves the old building, quote, unquote. But if you want a building that's inexpensive to maintain, that keeps you warm and cool when you want to be instead of when the weather decides it's going to be, I don't think you have a lot of choice. I think you're stuck with a brand-new facility and it's going to cost you a lot less money than trying to maintain something that is not new. I've done a lot of, one of my favorite rehab jobs was the Maritime Museum and Aquatic Park, San Francisco. They're maintaining, God knows how old that thing is. I think, I think I, I did look at the history, I think it's from the 30s. And the contractor did a great job, is still an ancient facility with ancient problems that hit them every day. So do those life cycle costings.
Through the chair.
Commissioner. Perry, did you have something else?
I'm good, thank you.
What I do as a librarian is I create activities and programs for children 18 months through 12-year-olds. So this is certainly right down my alley to think about how wonderful this environment could be. And, I mean, the key thing is creating environments that, most importantly, that are safe, that are enjoyable and create memories and wanting to come back over and over and over again. And so, in that, Commissioner Peterson certainly addressed some of the parking pieces. And I know budget's a huge issue and I was looking at either double-decking or underground parking, I know budget is a chunk of the budget. However, parking is huge. What you're building, what's going to take place here is going to be a destination. And a destination that aquatic parks, people go, we go on field trips to aquatic parks. There's huge reasons to go to those places and it's going to create it because this is open to the public. This is not by membership. And so, parking is huge. And, and so, I think that's a place, I think, that if we don't address that and just sort of, nothing's mediocre in this project, I can tell. But if we don't truly look at having more than enough, it needs to be more than enough, more than just a requirement, that we're doing a disservice because people are going to be coming from all over. It's not about our community, it's about creating spaces for a lot, thousands of people throughout the summer, especially because you're doing indoor and outdoors, so there's opportunity there. So that's, that, that's the place that I was concerned about because there's overflow, parking, there's overflow currently from St. Roberts when there is events and from St. Andrews on the other end and into the neighborhood. And if we can minimize that impact to our neighbors, that's, that's important. That's really important. So whatever it takes to focus on that parking and trying to do it, nothing, nothing, I don't believe there's anything affordable and being cost-effective. I think, I don't think you can do both unless you have huge donations of some sort. So that, that to me is really important. The other part I have is, these are small on, on this other end. I was looking at your BASE, your BASE section and I see early childhood education there. And I wanted to get a sense where would the camp, and that's on page 18. There you go. So where would, looking at that bottom corner on the left-side grid, there's a section that says early childhood education and I'm trying to get, wrap my brain where the camp programs, community, there's, you know, spring camp, winter camp, summer camp. What part of that BASE would they be in?
They would be probably in every classroom that's located in that BASE.
So then, during the summertime and those events, those other classrooms wouldn't be available for other types of things because they would be used what currently is.
Well, it, so the camps vary, right? And a lot of times, the camps will use the spaces as their home base. And so, like early childhood recreation classroom may be where the lunches are, the backpacks are and things like that. And then they may be scheduled in the art room for an hour during the day, they may be scheduled out in the ball field, they may have swim time. And so, just depending on what the camp is and the focus. And so, by having this facility, though, their capacity compared to what they have now for their camps will be drastically improved. And so, just not knowing exactly which camp and what they might schedule it for, all of these spaces would support summer camps and how they schedule it. I wouldn't imagine like the Group X room, they probably aren't going to change that schedule because people are adamant if they're doing the boot camp, you know, they want that every morning and, you know, those ongoing classes which have their set times. I would imagine the recreation programmers would schedule around. And so, just the added capacity and the flexibility of this larger program gives them much more opportunity for increased capacity for camps.
Certainly. And I can see that, I was just trying. Certainly. And I can see that. I was just trying to look at, obvious, it appears to me that the lobby, the gym, the fitness, the swimming pool are not places that you can compromise on. Those are scheduled for different, but there could be some shared space from the conference room, classroom, art room, and the early childhood program, is what I'm hearing.
And the two classrooms, and then potentially the third classroom that is added with the enhancement.
Because currently, I mean, the numbers at the summer camp, I certainly don't know specifically those numbers, but they run a huge amount. It's very popular. And it's important to have appropriate space for youngsters. And they use the outside quite a bit. So, having, it'll be shared spacing there, but I want a lobby to be sure that those areas are addressed. And then, the early childhood program, is that a program that's going to be running programs as in school, or are they going to be designated, like tiny tots, or always at a preschool?
So, this is, the picture there is an example of the facility that we did in Mitchell Park. And you see it has the varied height sinks for the young kids. It has a restroom adjacent to it with the small toilet for the kids to access. But you can, it's not licensed, so we don't have the secure outdoor area to complement the indoor area. And so, it's a recreational program class, which I think they're limited to two to three hours in terms of how they can run that class. But it might be preschool, it could be five-to-six-year-olds, it could be music classes. It could be varied, but it's not a licensed daycare or preschool activity.
It's my understanding that parks and Recs do not have to be licensed.
They do if they keep the kids longer than allotted time.
Well, they're currently in their, in the olden days, whatever those days are.
Right.
It was 16, up to 16 hours a week. And, but, the students, the youngsters are in there 25 to 40, 50 hours already. So, I mean, they're using it as a longer periods of time currently. And it's, and the only reason I know that is because it's advertised in the brochures that go out, the winter brochure, the summer brochures, they're indicated in there. So, they are being used much longer periods of time. So, if they're not, if you're required by licensing, that's a different topic.
So, we'll double-check with Recreation on that, because that was not our understanding in talking with them, that they do not have, you know, they do not have, their preschool classes are running, you know, two hours. They're not doing extended care, but we'll double-check. And I don't know if they're being provided off-site either. So, a lot of what's in the brochure from Recreation is not necessarily, sometimes they're contract services. But we'll definitely look into that, Mary.
And I'm not an expert in that area, just what I'm reading. And there are, you know, four-year-olds are still part of a licensed program and/or part of a preschool program. And so, but in the brochure, anyway, you'll get the information on that piece of it.
We'll definitely do that.
I'm sure you'll address it. So, I wanted to be sure, because as I look at that, those are, as lovely as it is, state-of-the-art, it's not designed as a preschool. You know, you don't have a block center area, you don't have all the appropriate developmental areas. That's definitely coming in for a particular lesson.
Exactly.
And I wanted just to have clarification on the usage of that area.
We'll get back to you on that through David.
Okay, that's great. Okay. And, let's see. And I wanted to just ask about the transition plan. Any thought to the transition plan? What happens to existing programs and current summer camps and winter camp programs during that transition plan? What's the timeframe of the project?
So, the timeframe of the project is with conceptual design finishing up in June, it'll take about 12 to 15 months to get to bid documents. And so, looking at starting construction in fall of 2019. And there may be some opportunities to do temporary facilities. The aquatics is nice with the new hillside scheme. The aquatics probably will be able to be the last phase of the project and may actually be able to remain operational up until the opening of new facility in the last phase, coming into the demolition of the aquatics. The city is definitely looking at planning interim facilities. And there are some opportunities that potentially are coming up in the community with some plans. And I just, the discussions haven't happened yet, so I don't really want to disclose things that are not really underway yet. But there are plans that are being considered and discussed right now, which we'll be able to bring back to you at a later time. The intent is not to close down programs and services during construction.
Okay. Sometimes it's unavoidable.
Sometimes, yes.
In this case, I've been in those situations. And, let's see, again, just to emphasize the aquatic park concept, because I've said my piece on that part, right?
Yes.
And then, I think you addressed the revenue piece, and then walking, bike-friendly areas. And not only for youngsters, but also for people with disabilities.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Great job on the presentation, very thorough. I'm looking forward to having this in our community at one point. It just thrills me. So, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful input.
You're welcome.
Through to the chair. I just wanted to go back to parking for a minute. With this new structure, is there an expectation that there's going to be more staff as well on site?
So, one of the things that we're working on is that operational plan. And until the exact program is decided upon, there's different operational models that we're looking at right now for these three different programs. The concept of the increased spaces and the additional programming opportunities does not necessarily mean direct increase in staff, definitely for aquatics, because you're going from a seasonal program for one pool to a year-round pool. But the additional spaces, a lot of those programs and services that are offered through the brochure, through Recreation, are actually contract programs from other service providers, yoga teachers, and things like that. And so, again, we'll be coming back with an operational plan and a cost model for the city's consideration and review.
Okay. Because I just want to echo my fellow commissioners on the parking. I park there when I've personally taken classes after work at 6:00. And there's staff parking that's designated, that's full. It's full during the day. And then, at night, you don't have to be staff member to park there. The parking lots are full. When, in the summers, when San Bruno starts their music in the parks, which are lovely, people park near us. We live off Niles, where Parkside is, which is the other side. And people park there and walk down, because parking is so bad. And then, those go into September, when you have movies in the park. So, it's a continuous, kind of like this revolving door of parking situations, which we've been talking about a lot here in Commission. But I do want to say that I agree with Commissioner Johnson that with this new aquatics park, I believe even more people are going to come and visit. And we really do need to look ahead and figure out a way to make sure that everybody can park. And then, I want to also echo Commissioner Lethien's comments about the pathways. I just noted here walker, stroller, wheelchair access. And if we can, I know that the focus is really on the side where the new building's going to be built. But I'd like there to be some kind of a larger vision, where we're looking at Crystal Springs, how you're getting from Crystal Springs into the park and throughout the park. It's not that friendly right now for strollers, definitely, for bikes, for wheelchairs. And so, I would hope that this is going to be a view for the entire park, not just half of the park. And then, the last comment I had is, I'm a big proponent for the community add-on. I think it would be wonderful for San Bruno to have a space where 250 people can gather and rent the space for family events or whatever, what have you. I know one of the things that I brought up at the public meeting, and I want to bring it up again, is the possibility of that community space being on a second story, so that there could be a view of the park. I think that would just be a really lovely addition. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else?
Okay. Would you go back to the slide of the valley option?
Yeah. Thank you for that. That gave me some interesting insights. When I first saw that, I thought, oh, wow, if I was building a house there, that'd be awesome. Come up to drive and see the beautiful house. But I really get what everyone else is saying about the hill option. And it really does kind of buffer the site from all those issues that might come up. But what I did get from this was that pathway to the parking lot at the, the swimming pool parking lot? Yeah. The path that's demonstrated there, coming on the north end of that now, made me think, you know, when I used that parking lot at the swimming pool, it's not, I've always thought it belonged to the church. I never thought it was part of the city's parking lot. Maybe we could put some effort into making it look like a city parking lot, or designating it as a city parking lot, so that people using it realize they're not, like, parking in the church's spaces. And to have a pathway that connects that to the rest of the park, because right now, it really doesn't seem like part of the park. And I've always used that space hesitantly. I'm also wondering, as long as we're going through all of this effort, that green space that we see to the left of that parking lot? Yeah. Who does that belong to? Maybe we can acquire that and make parking out of that.
I'm pretty sure that's the church.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, too. But, I mean, it's worth investigating. Also, okay, also along the roadway to the Beckner Shelter, there might be some opportunities for parking. And the last thing that I got from this picture is that with the hill option, we've talked about taking the swimming pool out, right? But we really haven't thought about what to put in its place, except grass. What if we moved the kids' playground, you know, with the small stuff, to that location? It'd be pretty inexpensive. And turn that section of the park into parking. You know, let's give some thought to how we're going to use the spaces that are going to be vacated from the swimming pool or the hillside, or however we're going to do that. Maybe we can relocate some of the other facilities to those spaces that are going to be vacated to create parking opportunities. That's it. Excellent project. Thank you for your hard work. Well, well done.
Thank you for your comments. To add to a couple of things you said, though.
Please.
Again, I appreciate everyone's echoing. You know, I think we hear it from all of you, again, reinforcing the parking issue. But appreciate kind of encouraging us to kind of look outside the box, maybe within the greater park itself, for how we can gain more parking potentially. One thing to note on kind of what we've been calling the Great Meadow, which is in either scheme, the kind of the returned parkland, is definitely wanting to be, definitely have an open programmable space for the music in the park events. Doesn't mean that we can't relocate a portion of the playground here, for example, for that concept. But just as we've been looking at the open space, definitely wanting to relocate the Rotary Pavilion. And particularly in the hill scheme here, this outdoor pool is kind of extending into a little bit of the existing area where that, the music in the park occurs today. And so, the thought was, and then, in this new regained park space, at least providing a portion of that that's open enough to provide for the much-loved city events.
Through to the chair. The Rotary Pavilion is, was a, was a project that was really important to the Rotary. And I remember that process. I'm a Rotarian. So, it would be really important to make that connection with the San Bruno Rotary Club, so that there is some opportunity for them to have engagement in the process. They would want that and support that process. So, if you can add that to your notes, it would be great.
We will be meeting with them this week.
With the Rotary Club?
Mm-hmm.
Tomorrow, Wednesday? Is there a meeting?
No, I have a stakeholder interview call with a member on Thursday.
Okay. I'll be at that meeting tomorrow. Be interesting.
Cool. Anyone else? Nope. Go on, go on, go on. Thank you very, very, very much. Well done. All right. Let's move on to seven, 78, city staff discussions. It wasn't, but go ahead. If you could be brief, it's getting late.
My name's Calista. I live on Poplar Avenue. And thank you, this is really great. I'm very impressed with it. The reason I jumped up is because I just wanted to speak for our open space. And it's very interesting to me that park and parking are kind of diametrically opposed as we're using it in this. We really need parking, but we're also talking about our park. And I just, I hope that we can come up with some solution to keep the meadow for various programming. I mean, once we build on something, that's gone. And we are going up higher in a lot of other areas, because, of course, we must to accommodate more people. And one of the thoughts that I just had, it's very expensive to have park and go down. And I like how you characterized it, that we're allergic to above-ground parking structures. Yes. However, I'm just curious, I know I spoke before with David Waltering about this, and another project opportunity. I wonder if where you are talking about having, where we have the surface parking right now, one, if you could bury parking back, you know, because when you're evaluating a site, if you're digging into the hill, you know, burying parking, you know, down and back, you know, that seems fair game, that's not a attractive place. But if you did double-decker parking there, what if you put parkland on top of a parking structure? I think it would be so interesting to be at canopy level of the trees. I mean, I can see the nature programming for classes and everything, you know, double-decking the parking, and, you know, not just a green roof where you, we are, you know, creating, you know, reducing heat island effect and all the other things that we know about sustainable building and projects and building, but literally create it as actual park, accessible park land. Because right now, we can't enjoy any of our surface lots, for obvious reasons. You could accommodate more cars, and we could have more park on top. Just think of the things that one could see from there. I mean, that just sounds like a really exciting way to use our open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Calista. Okay. 78, city staff discussions.
Vice Chair Bia Sodi and Planning Commissioners, just like to acknowledge that two of our planning commissioners and two of our staff members, myself included, went to the Planning Commissioners Academy on April 4th through the 6th in Monterey. We have distributed information to all of you electronically regarding that meeting, that conference, and even some materials from prior conferences as well. I wanted to give a little bit of an overview and encourage our planning commissioners as well to maybe share highlights from that conference. At the conference, we had a couple of keynote presentations. And the theme, or one of the themes, was housing, housing, housing. And with that, the presenters talked about new housing laws. We've touched on that here before, and how the state legislature is kind of moving in the direction to basically require that local agencies streamline their housing processes to get more housing built within our state. And to the extent that there may even be laws coming forward that require that local agencies allow housing in certain areas, say, near transit by right. So, housing laws are changing in our state to really encourage local communities to construct more housing. We heard that, just in terms of our state, that we're moving from suburban to urban, that indeed, as far as housing's concerned, it would be good for local communities to look at strengthening the link between transit and housing. So, putting housing close to transit so as to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and just be able to move people around more efficiently. We also heard that currently, we're about 2 million housing units short of where we should be statewide, and that by 2025, that number would go up to about 3.5 million. So, the issue is urgent and needs to be addressed. And the keynote speakers talked extensively about housing and housing issues. As far as sessions are concerned, there were a number of very good sessions. The sessions ranged from the basics of land use planning, the basics of how to conduct a planning commission meeting, what are the standard planning documents that we all use, the general plan, specific plan, zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, why we use them, what's in them, how they help us plan our communities. There were sessions about improving our design review processes. There were sessions about our California Environmental Quality Act, what that is, why it's important in terms of our use of SEQA to review both public and private projects, to address potential environmental impacts of public and private projects. We learned about municipal finance. There was kind of a hu- There was kind of a humorous session about conducting planning commission meetings and what people could do to improve on those meetings. Discussions about the roles of the planning commission with respect to council and staff. And a lot of just good interaction with commissioners and staff members from around the state attending. I thought it was a very, very worthwhile meeting. And for those of you who haven't had a chance yet to attend, I certainly hope that you can attend next year. And with that, I would, would appreciate it if maybe, if you would like, maybe Commissioner Mason or Commissioner Legacy, you might comment on highlights or thoughts about the, the
Okay. I will start. We, first of all, thank you to staff and Director Waltering. I thought the conference was a really great opportunity. It was put on by the League of Cities, which is really well-respected in California and across the country as really a lead agency, providing legal advice and guidance for good government, transparent government. So the conference overall was very well, well organized. And what I really liked is that every session was split into two. It was kind of like they, they knew a lot of new commissioners would be there, so they had one session geared towards new commissioners and then one session geared towards existing commissioners, kind of like as a, to increase your knowledge of a specific area. So I really enjoyed it. I think my highlights were the Straight from Sacramento Conference, which was a seminar that provided all the new laws that were coming down from Sacramento. It was actually quite eye-opening how much, when I, I spoke with Director Waltering about this, but we received our report at the last planning commission meeting. The city council recently received their report on housing from Director Waltering. And the amount of housing that's truly going to be required of cities is pretty high compared to what we're, we have been producing so far. And it's a little alarming. So I just noted that, you know, that these projects like Plaza, Huntington, Mills Park Project, they're really great projects that we're looking forward to, but those are really small drops in the bucket compared to what cities are being asked to do from Sacramento. So that's just something that was eye-opening for a small city like San Bruno that is a transit hub and next to a large city. I also just noted that I liked, they gave us some background on SEQA, on social media, how to use social media as a commissioner, kind of like Director Waltering said, do's and don'ts. And then how to use your city if you are a transit hub, what the push is right now from Sacramento, which is really to build housing all around your transit and looking at how you're going to do it, how you're going to build affordable housing, permanent supportive housing. There's a significant amount of bills that are kind of in progress right now, but it looks like they are going to be moving forward and they're going to affect all of us. So I also, just one last thing, is I wanted to highlight is something that Director Waltering mentioned in his report to the city council, which is that low-income housing, and correct me if I'm, if I'm, if this is wrong, but in San Francisco, eligibility for low-income housing is now income beginning at $65,000 all the way up to $105,000 a year. So low-income housing, I just want to repeat that, is $65,000 to $105,000 a year. And so I think here in San Bruno, we really need to look at the messaging of what affordable housing is. We need to talk about what workforce housing might be for people like our teachers who are here in San Bruno so that, you know, every restaurant we go to has dishwashers, has people who are working in the back that may not even qualify at $65,000 for low-income housing. And so this is just a very real issue. It was in your face at the conference. I think nobody could escape it. And so at some point, I think in San Bruno, we need to also come to that reality. But it was an honor to be with the people who are planning California. You know, it was, it was really neat. So I want to thank Director Waltering and the staff for organizing that for us. Thank you.
I'd like to second that. That was truly an excellent conference. I've been to a, a number of somewhat related events and this, this was top-notch. That was probably the best I'd seen ever. Excellent speakers. Indeed, the, the housing issue is the topic for California in terms of planning. I took away from that, the, somebody, one of the presenters said that what we have to understand and integrate is that now, from now on, housing and transportation are like Legos. They're inextricably linked. And that will make a change, I think. That's something that's around the corner in terms of our, a lot of our, our projects that we see here and the comments that we get from the public, it, it still revolves around generally single-use residences and whether there's parking on the street in front of the house. And that's obviously extremely important because of what San Bruno looks like. But we also have to understand that in the future, what we're going to see more and more is the multifamily, you know, multi-use kind of projects. And that, that should be as important to us because as Commissioner Mason mentioned, a lot of those, those bills that were discussed at the legislative update are, are tend, trend towards taking away from local control and making benchmarks where if, if you, your project applicant meets them, then the, it meets the state requirements and there may not be much authority locally to, to alter the project. The, the key preemptive measure we, that was suggested, and happily, San Bruno is already ahead on that, is to make the design review policies very clear and very specific. Because that, in, in those various bills and proposals, that would be applicable. And, and by and large, those various proposals tend to say, if those guidelines are met, then you have to approve. So we have very good guidelines. Some cities don't have any guidelines and in that case, they would have no say whatsoever. There are so many of those, those types of bills that are proposed that I suspect that some will get through and some of that control will, will, you know, will be hard to regain. But I really enjoyed it. Thank you for sending us.
Commissioner.
Excuse me. Director Waltering, I have a question for you. Did I hear you say there'll be 2.2 million short in housing and will be 3.5 and short in what year?
2025. So right now, statewide, about 2 million housing units short right now. And by 2025, that's expected to be 3.5 million housing units short. And that's just total housing units. As mentioned by the commissioners, Commissioner Mason especially, there's, there's the element to, the component of affordable housing. So those numbers are gross numbers. But what's really, really difficult to read are the very low-income housing units. As we know, here in our community during this cycle, this eight-year cycle, we're three years into it, and we have not yet produced a single very low-income housing unit. That's not uncommon, by the way, for so many communities. It's very difficult to produce those units because they require so much in terms of subsidy, but the need is there.
And the other question I have was, was there any discussion, and this would be for also those commissioners that attended, on the impact on the next economic downturn? You know, we have a cycle every 10 to 12 years.
Right. We do have cycles. And I think at this, at this time, the focus really was on more the surging economic condition of the state, the large number of jobs being created and trying to house the people that are coming for the jobs here in the state. So the focus really was more in terms of this more, I'll say, booming, expanding, surging economy and its impacts in terms of housing and traffic congestion as opposed to kind of looking at what happens next in terms of another downturn like the Great Recession in 2007 through '09. So that really wasn't the focus at this meeting?
Sure. Yeah. I'm certain it wasn't a focus. I was just wondering if there was any discussion because we're about 10 years there. And you know, every 10 to 12 years, you, you, you watch that pattern and wondering.
Right.
The discussion out there is, okay, when is it coming? It's almost like you're waiting for that big earthquake that we've been waiting for about 60 years.
Right. I think that Commissioner Mason may have a comment on this.
I know at one of the sessions I went to, that question did come up and there was discussion around that. And the response that the speaker gave was that as of now, there's hundred, there's, I think it was somewhere around 300,000 people that leave every year, but there's also about 300,000 that come. And the number one state that they're leaving to is Texas. And so he was, he was from Texas. He left California and moved to Texas. And he was talking about how, you know, the, the, every 10-year cycle probably won't impact California too much because the people who are moving here are moving here, but that doesn't change the people who are already here. And he specifically noted that, I guess in the 80s, there was a large Hispanic population that moved to California. They were the group that was having the kids, that was raising the population of childbirth. And those kids are now, I'll say, my age and looking for their first houses. And so the boom is happening kind of at this last streak right now in California. But he did not feel that there was going to be a big change in the need for housing in California.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Selecting the May 10, 2018 Architectural Review Committee.
So as, as we normally do, we look for volunteers. Three volunteers, please.
I will be unable to, and I don't think I'm going to volunteer Kevin because he's had some issues. So I don't think he'll show.
So we have Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Legacy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any planning commission discussion this evening? Anyone want to bring up something for the group?
Through the chair.
I thought I was going to get through this one without this, but I have to mention something about Victory Honda. I went there, I saw their striped places for customer parking. I went there three times since the last meeting. Whenever I was there, there were no customer parking spots open. So I don't know where all those people are, but my guess is a number of those cars aren't customer cars. Either that or they're being worked on and they're being used as customer cars, yes, to the customer, but the customer dropped it off at 8:00 a.m. and it's coming back at 6:00 p.m. So if you're a customer and you drive onto the lot, I don't see where you could park.
Through the chair and addressing that comment, in our update, we mentioned that. We mentioned the, the concern about needing to continue to monitor the, the parking situation there. Yes, they've striped their parking areas indicated and they do have pavement graphics that indicate customers and employees. But we will need to continue to monitor them in terms of making sure that the spaces that have been marked for customers and employees are truly available. And our staff is working with them on that. And in addition, we mentioned too, this, this idea, the, I'll say, remote parking available for staff on White Way, that we want to make sure that we work with them to make sure that they have a shuttle program or a way for their employees to realistically use those spaces. So those, those are two areas and there are others, I'm sure. But those are two areas that we are working with them on. I know our staff, our associate planner here this evening often is, is working with them on these issues. So we, we understand that and we'll continue to work with them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the, through the chair?
No. I just said, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do, but go ahead.
Okay. I had, one was just a question of interest. South San Francisco has a meeting tomorrow for their PUC site and housing proposed for the site? I was just wondering if we're following that. I'm curious to see what the neighboring cities are doing for, you know, how they are addressing housing and whether there's anything to, to learn.
And that particular meeting is about, is it about a particular private development project or, I'm, I'm not sure I heard you.
It's a, it's a redevelopment of what I understand was a, a city site. So, and there, I, I believe they're at the, they're still at the conceptual stage, but they're having a big public meeting.
Right. As a courtesy, and really actually more than a courtesy depending on impact, local jurisdictions actually circulate documents back and forth. So for example, if there's a larger project, say here in San Bruno, or in the neighboring jurisdictions like Millbrae or South San Francisco, there's a courtesy, and I'll say that in terms of impact, it's even a requirement in some cases when there's, say, an environmental impact report, an EIR, being prepared, that we're invited to a scoping meeting, that we're invited to review and comment officially on the project in terms of, are there impacts to the city of San Bruno and its interests? In this case, if it's a SEQA document, are there environmental issues? Are there potential environmental impacts that would be of concern to our citizens, our community? And so I would say, in responding to, to your question, in those cases, yes. In those cases where there are more official documents going back and forth regarding typically larger projects, we do receive those. And when appropriate, or if appropriate, we formally con, comment and may attend meetings. Otherwise, we, if we have time, we do. And of course, we, we track the newspaper to kind of see what's going on in, in neighboring jurisdictions.
My other question was whether there had been any public interest in the, the new decorations that have appeared at the Shell Station?
Yes, there's interest in, in the new decorations at the Shell Station on El Camino Real, near the, the Armory. There's a, a new dinosaur, I think a T-Rex. And then there's another dinosaur that didn't fare very well. I'm not sure what kind of dinosaur that is, but that dinosaur is laid out. And, and yes, we're interested in that and we are following that.
Very polite and put, by the way. Commissioner.
I just want to comment on the Shell Station. I attended the council meeting and presented my point of view as a citizen. The one thing that one of the council members indicated that that type of item or decor should be in a public park. And as we're developing a public park, I want to, want to record that I would not support that in our public park. I also want to state that Shell Station is there to generate business. And if you were to put that particular type of decor in there for decor, it's not going to generate business. So it really is not a realistic comment. And to think that someone who's applying for something that's going to create opportunity for them, that by putting some, some decor, it's not going to accomplish their goals. So I think it's really important that this level of recommendations not be considered.
Anyone else?
I, I want to put a plug out for the, the Home For All series that, that we've been attending and my fellow commi, I have, I don't know if all my fellow commissioners have received invitations. I can forward as needed. But the, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the County of San Mateo has collected together speakers and teams of people focusing around in, in increasing housing in San Mateo County, educating about the seriousness of our crisis as Commissioner Mason and Legacy have, have learned at their training. But I have found it to be a really good resource and it's typically in the mornings and it's, it's usually on, on a workday. So it may not be great for everybody, but I've found it to be really helpful and it's really taught me a lot about how important working towards more housing and more affordable housing is. So I recommend it.
Thank you. All right. All right.
Through the chair, if I may. I know it's getting late. I just want to say something because we're not going to meet for another month and time may be of the essence. I don't expect a response, but I do just want to say that recently, the school board has voted to close El Cristal, one of the schools that is adjacent to San Bruno Park. And I thought it timely because we saw this presentation today. To mention that at some point, I actually don't know if the notice has gone out yet. I think Director Waltering may know, but at some point, that offer will go out to the district first and the city. And I would hope that the city is taking a serious look at potentially purchasing that property. I think it would be a huge lost opportunity that we would never get back, especially when we're in planning stages right now for our new aquatic center and recreation center. And so I just really want to advocate that the city take a look at that opportunity. The second comment I wanted to make is that since we last met, there was a shooting at YouTube. And unfortunately, there was a loss of life. I think that the city of San Bruno's response was phenomenal. I want to thank definitely all of the, the police department that did a great job. But what I really want to focus on as a Planning Commissioner is that I, I hope that this shooting that occurred doesn't impede on the vision that we have of a unified and integrated YouTube vision that is supposed to be YouTube along with the residents of San Bruno. And so when I, when I saw that, of course, the first thought was, let's hope everybody's safe. And then as a Commissioner, my next thought was, we want to work with YouTube and we don't want to use this as an opportunity to have, to build a fortress, is, is what I was concerned about. And so I think that the vision still, at least for me, remains the same, is to have an integrated facility where YouTube employees can enjoy their space. But as this vision is growing and as the architects are planning this for us to review at some point, I really do hope that this is an integrated vision, that it continues to be an integrated vision where employees of YouTube and residents of San Bruno can enjoy the space together. And as time goes by, employees of YouTube may become residents of San Bruno. So I think that the long-term goal remains the same. And I just wanted to mention that because this just happened in this past month since we last met. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.